Thank you and welcome to today's candidate forum brought to you by a partnership between City Club of Central Oregon and the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a non-person grassroots political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government. They never support or oppose any political candidate. Today, we are hosting the Democratic candidates for the Deschutes County Commissioner. My name is Mike Fisher and I am honored to be the moderator for today's forum. By day, I am a business analyst. By night, I am a sportscaster, host and producer of The Ultimate Old E Show, an emcee, a stage actor, and a radio and print journalist. The Board of County Commissioners is comprised of three elected officials who serve four-year terms. The Board is elected at large, serves as the public's elected advocate, and is the policymaking body of the Deschutes County Government. The Board's duties and responsibilities include executive, judicial, and legislative authority over policy matters of countywide concern, including creation and enforcement of county ordinances and establishment of the budget. The Board of Commissions is the governing body for other boards such as the Deschutes County 911 Service District, the Black Butte Ranch Service District, the Extension 4 County Service District, and the Sun River Service District. First, I'd like to give a shout out to City Club's platinum sponsors, Brooks Resources and St. Charles Health Systems. Without their support and the support of our other sponsors, we would not be able to bring you today's live stream. City Club has been deeply disrupted by the coronavirus pandemic and its impact on public events. If you watched today and enjoyed, please consider making a donation. To donate, please go to City Club's website at cityclubco.org. Today's live stream would not be possible without Hand in Hand Productions. City Club is proud to partner with Matt Hand as we venture into this brave new digital world. Thanks so much for all you are doing for our community, Matt. We do appreciate it. And thank you to primary candidates Greg Bryant and Phil Chang for participating in today's forum. We appreciate the gravity of committing to run for public office. Our goal is to provide an opportunity for fair and civil discourse. We will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and each question is rotated, so each candidate will answer the question in a different sequence. Candidates will have up to two minutes to answer each question. At the end, each candidate may offer a two-minute closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. Okay, let's get started and hear from our candidates. First, we'd like to invite Phil Chang to offer his opening statement. Phil, your two minutes start now.
First off, thanks so much to the City Club and the League of Women Voters for making this opportunity to speak to voters possible before the ballots are due. My name is Phil Chang. I'm running for Deschutes County Commissioner's seat number two. Deschutes County has been a great place to live, work, and play for me and my family for 16 years, and I'm running for Commissioner to help keep it a great place to live, work, and play as it grows and changes in the coming decade. The 16 years that I've lived here in Deschutes County have been dedicated to public service to our community. I've helped to make Central Oregon a more ecologically and economically sustainable place through work in forests, water, and energy resources, and I've brought federal and state resources and policies to the local level to address critical needs like transportation, infrastructure, housing, and veteran services. Let me give a couple of specific examples. Over 10 years ago, I helped to bring together the timber industry, environmentalists, and firefighters to end the timber wars locally and build agreements to restore 250,000 acres of forest surrounding Sisters Bend and Sun River. Our collaborative plan won a $10 million award to restore habitat, reduce wildfire risk, and create jobs in the forest industry right here in Deschutes County. During three and a half years, I worked for Senator Jeff Merkley as his field representative here in Central Oregon. I helped him deliver $30 million to agricultural water conservation projects here and tens of millions of dollars to expand the Redmond Airport terminal and runways. So there's just a couple of examples of things that I've been involved with over my public service career here. As a candidate for Deschutes County Commissioner, I offer a collaborative approach to problem-solving that includes and respects everyone and an understanding of how all levels of government work and how to get things done inside the public sector. I am a dedicated public servant, and I will work hard for you as your Deschutes County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And Greg, I invite you to offer your opening statement.
Okay. Thank you, City Club and League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. I really appreciate this. A little bit about me, I was raised in rural Indiana. I'm a Vietnam War vet. I have an accounting degree from Indiana University and an MBA from Ball State. I have over 30 years of accounting experience. I also have retired from Bend to Bend in 2013, and I completed the Deschutes County College in 2019. Currently, I'm on the Bend City Transportation Advisory Committee. I'm on the Cascade East Transit Advisory Committee. I'm a firewise coordinator for Deschutes River Woods, and I'm a vice president of the Deschutes River Woods Neighborhood Association. Currently, I think from a platform standpoint, the coronavirus 19 is going to be a big hit. With my experience, I think I can help guide the county through this problem we're facing now. Other than that, I also have transportation, increasing safety, and reduction of congestion. Also wildfire. Wildfire is my preparedness is the thing I'm involved with. Also work with ODOT on increasing efficiencies for '97, '26, and '20. And, okay, what I am for, I am for gun background checks and also I'm against the sale of assault weapons. I'm also for Vogrov versus Wade. A woman has a right to change, and I'm also fight against global warming. I deeply am for the community, and I wish this to be the place that everybody wishes to vacation in and live. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Let's commence with our questions, and Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this question. First question is, what do you consider the greatest challenges that Deschutes County will face during the time you expect to serve on the county commission?
Okay, what I'm looking at is the fact that we're going to have big budget constraints because of the coronavirus 19, also transportation and wildfire preparedness because we're going to have water shortages, I believe, because of the global warming that we're foreseeing. On the budget adjustments, we're going to have a large reduction of revenue, I believe, so we have to see where things can be cut, I believe. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question. What do you consider the greatest challenges that Deschutes County will face during the time you expect to serve on the county commission?
Great question. When I started this campaign, what I would say to everyone was the greatest challenge facing our community is rapid growth. Now, in the time of COVID-19, I would say that responding to this public health crisis and then helping our community recover from the fallout are probably the most important things that our public officials need to be talking about right now. So let me talk a little bit about both of those things. So in terms of growth, I have seen that Deschutes County, I've actually now lived through a couple cycles of this. I've seen Deschutes County be one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. I've seen how that is an incredible opportunity, but it can also be an impact to housing affordability, traffic congestion, how our infrastructure can fall far, far behind, and how we can lose a lot of open space and habitat in the process of growing. So our community needs to grow well, and in my mind, that means that we need to use the land we have very efficiently. We need to concentrate development in the areas where it's easiest to build that infrastructure. We need to do mixed-use development so people have shorter distances to travel, to get to work, to get to school, to get to shopping, things like that. And then when we have that kind of a, it's an urban forum really, then we can have various transportation options to get to where we're going. So in a nutshell, that's kind of my vision for growth. For COVID-19, our county has both a communicable disease division within its public health department and it has an emergency management group, and those two bodies have been helping our community respond very effectively to the COVID-19 situation so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And Phil, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. How long have you been a resident of Deschutes County and what community service experience qualifies you to serve as our next commissioner?
Great. Thank you for that question. Like I said, I've been here for 16 years, and I have my career public service experience to talk about, and then I have a little bit of community experience to mention as well. In terms of the public sector work, the public service work I've done while I've been here, I was the Natural Resource Program Administrator for the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council for nine years. I was the Central Oregon Field Representative for Senator Jeff Merkley, for US Senator Jeff Merkley, for three and a half years, representing the needs of our community to Washington, DC, and then trying to bring back policy and funding to address the needs of our region. And then, most recently, I've been working a state job for the Oregon Department of Forestry, managing a program called Federal Forest Restoration, and was focused on building partnerships to increase the pace and scale of restoration around the state. But as a community member, I've done a variety of things. I like to volunteer for stewardship projects, things like trails projects. I have a past life history doing trail work, pulling weeds, planting trees, cleaning up riparian areas, things like that, volunteer work. But I've also served, I served on the Vision Task Force, the original Vision Task Force for the Bend 2030 Initiative, and then was one of the founding board members for that organization. I served on the Board of my Neighborhood Association, the River West Neighborhood Association, and I also served on the Board of the Local Chapter of Trout Unlimited. So I have a sort of a community service background, both in my public, in my career life, my professional life, and in my personal life.
Thank you, Phil. And Greg, same question. How long have you been a resident of Deschutes County and what community service experience qualifies you to serve as our next county commissioner?
Okay, I've been here about seven years and came here in 2013, and right now I'm with Bend City Transportation Advisory Committee. I've been doing that for about two and a half years. I've been with the transit for about a year and a half, and wildfire, I've been with that for about three years. And since I, I've also been the vice president of the Neighborhood Association. Once I became the vice president of Neighborhood Association, I decided to go down and see what the commissioners were doing, and so I've been to probably 50 to 60 other different meetings throughout the three years. And with that, I've had a lot of experience with people that they report to and the report to them and also to some of their other people. And completed the Deschutes County College there in 2019. So I think I have a well-rounded knowledge and also from my county experience. I have a lot of experience because, like Phil said, the coronavirus situation, we're going to have to hit the budgets pretty bad. So that's what I have.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And since both of you have touched on it, our next question will address that specific virus, and Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond first. Assuming Deschutes County will take a big revenue hit from the pandemic, what are your priorities regarding cutbacks to live within the county's means?
Okay, with that one, I look at it from a team standpoint, and I look at the fact that you have to bring the, all the department heads together, and we have to look at where we can cut and where we can't cut and make a determination from that. It's a team concept, and we all have to be running in the same area, same direction. That's the way I look at it. It's not, it's not easy, but that's the way you have to look at it. Thank you. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question. Assuming it'll take a big revenue hit, the county with the pandemic, what are your priorities regarding cutbacks to live within the county's means?
Well, I always say, if you want to understand what an elected official really cares about, don't listen to their campaign speech, but look at the budget they prepare. So I think this is a really important question because those funds are what allow us to deliver all of the important services that the county delivers. But one of the things we need to think about with revenue and revenue reductions from COVID-19 is that they will, we will feel those revenue reductions in very specific places, on funds that are used for very specific things. If our transient room tax revenue goes down, we only use that for certain things. If gas tax revenues around the state go down, we use those for our roads. And so, and one of the big questions that I think a lot of people are trying to scratch their heads about right now is, will we, how many people will continue to pay their property taxes? You know, what makes our general fund for the county after, you know, in the fallout of COVID-19? Because during the Great Recession, we saw the percentage of people who were paying their, you know, county taxpayers who were paying their property taxes dropped from like 96 to 92%. And that's, that means millions of dollars. That's a big hit. So the general fund, you know, the general fund is one thing to look at, and some of these other things are other things to look at. I think we need to continue to, we need to continue to try to fund all of the things that we're currently doing because they're all really important services. Health services, road services, community justice services, but when we get the numbers, we will have to, A, look at, you know, which revenue has fallen and what that, you know, what we usually spend that on, and B, what's the most strategic thing for us to keep investing in at this point in time? Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And Phil, you have the opportunity to respond first to this next question, and it flows out of last question. Governors who are reopening their states say they are following the science and the data. What specific sources should the commissioners use and consult to make evidence-based, data-driven decisions for the county? And if you can, please cite sources.
That's a good question. So I, we are all during this public health, national public health crisis, looking for what the most credible, relevant sources of information are. At the federal level, we see a lot of good information coming out of places like the Centers for Disease Control, the CDC. You know, Dr. Anthony Fauci has, you know, become a real celebrity. You know, he was on Saturday Night Live this last weekend. And, you know, so there are people at the federal level who I believe, you know, there are federal institutions that I think are worth listening to. At the state level, the governor has put together a team to guide the, you know, guide the response and reopening plans for the state. And, you know, they're, that panel has, you know, public health officials from the local level, state epidemiology experts, and a number of other people. So I think that we should feel pretty good about following the governor's plan for reopening. I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of suffering out there because people can't work right now and people can't connect with their loved ones and their community. But the reason that Oregon has been so successful in keeping the numbers low, you know, the reason we flattened the curve so much already is because we adopted, we adopted stay-at-home order, the governor's stay-at-home order, early. And so we can't, we need to stay the course on that until the experts who really understand the spread of this disease tell us we can reopen.
Great. Thank you, Phil. And Greg, same question. Governors are reopening their states, and they say they're following the science and the data. What specific sources should the commissioners use and consult to make evidence-based, data-driven decisions for the county? And please cite sources if possible.
Okay, yeah, I believe that the governor's done a good job. We've done a very good way of keeping the curve down. In the county, we have a medical director, and so I would be heavily weighing on him. But, I mean, the CDC and Fauci, like Phil says, I mean, they have a lot of information. But I think what we have to do is look at the numbers and see if it's going down, and then we can let things go slowly because I don't think we want to let us have beaches like what they have in Florida or what they had in California this last weekend. So that's what I have.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. We're going to adhere a little bit to an issue that has been sensitive over the last several years in our county. How would you rate the importance of the lack of affordable housing in Deschutes County, and why would you give it that rating?
Okay, what was the last part of that again?
Sure. And how would you rate the importance of the lack of affordable housing in Deschutes County, and why would you give it that rating, whatever rating you choose?
Oh, I would say the rating was probably like a D. Right now, affordable housing is, we hardly have any of it right now, unfortunately. With me taking, making some of the calls, some people, they can't find affordable housing here in Bend, so they have to find someplace away for their house, so they have to, you know, maybe drive 30 minutes to get to work. And now with this, they're even in worse shape. So with affordable housing, we need to be able to give, what it is is mainly land. We have to have a smaller blueprint for the houses to be on because land's a big amount of the cost. And we also sometimes have to reduce the permits cost that we have. So I believe that's all that I have.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question, please.
We're experiencing an affordable housing crisis in Deschutes County right now. And in the first couple of weeks, when I was able to go door-to-door for this campaign, before we all got shut down, one of the, one of the groups of people that I met that most stuck with me was a young couple in their late twenties who were food service folks and who had grown up here in Bend, were doing their part, playing a critical role in the functioning of our tourism and leisure economy here, and who couldn't barely, they were barely hanging on being able to afford to live in Bend anymore. And that is, in my mind, just criminal when the people who make your economy run in a place can't live there anymore. As Greg mentioned, if we want to think about how to solve the affordable housing crisis, there are a couple of components of cost in a unit of housing. Land is one of them. The building materials and construction is another. That one, the government doesn't have much control over. And then infrastructure is the third piece that shows up in permit costs and in what are called system development charges. So the government, you know, the county can play a huge, the county and the cities can play a huge role in the cost of land in a unit of housing in, through land use controls and land use planning. Essentially, if you allow cluster development, if you allow multifamily housing, then you can put many more units of housing in the same area of land, and you can bring the costs, the land cost at least of that unit of housing down. Infrastructure is another place where the county or the city can work really hard to secure state or federal investment in infrastructure or low-interest financing or things like that that help us bring down the cost of system development charges. So there's a couple of things that local governments can do, but a lot of the show with affordable housing is being done by affordable housing specialist organizations in our, in our community, like Pacific Crest Affordable Housing, Housing Works, Core Land Trust, Habitat for Humanity, and we should be doing everything we can to support those groups.
Thank you, Phil. And Phil, you have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. The city of Bend is now working to execute its UGB expansion. What steps should the county be taking now to support its cities and plans for future growth?
Great question. So when we talked about, when we talked about the land cost in a unit of housing, one of the ways that we bring down land costs, I talked about using land more efficiently, but the one of the ways we bring down land cost is by increasing the supply of valuable lands. And we can do that, one of the best way we can do that is through urban growth boundary expansions. And through many decades, the city of Bend and the county have partnered real, and other cities, the other cities in Deschutes County, Sisters, Redmond, you know, I fully expect this with Lapine as Lapine matures. Our cities and county have worked really well together on urban growth boundary expansions. Everybody kind of thinks of an urban growth boundary expansion as a city-led process, and the city plays a huge central role in it. But if the county wanted to make the process difficult, if the county had a different vision for land use than the city, then a UGB expansion could actually turn into a huge city-county drama, and we've seen that in a lot of other counties around the state. So the fact that we don't have that, we haven't had that situation here in Deschutes County is, I think, a sign that things have been working. So the county should continue to play that kind of supporting partnership role to the city, and, you know, if the city is going down, you know, a path that's going to get them in trouble, like for example, if they try to kind of deviate from the state's guidelines for an urban growth boundary expansion, the county can, you know, in a partnership supportive way, kind of help them steer back to putting forward an urban growth boundary expansion that is going to pass muster and will sail smoothly through the state process.
Great. Thank you, Phil. And Greg, your opportunity to respond to the question, and I'll repeat it. City of Bend is now working to execute its urban growth boundary expansion. What steps should the county take now to support the city and the local cities and plan for future growth?
That's a good question because the UGB, the last time that Bend had their UGB, they sent it up to the state, and the state cut their acreage quite a bit because the state, state has a big call on this, and they say they're wanting to make sure that you get your population as dense within the city proper. Some other words, and the county and city has worked very well together, and so they've done it also with Redmond and with Lapine, and I believe Sisters too, on trying to make it as doable as possible for them to get through, get it through the state because they have to go through the state to get the UGB approved. That's what I have. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. Are you committed to reading all submitted land use materials and sorting through minutia in a quasi-judicial capacity? If yes, please name two land use skill sets that you would want to brush up on before taking office in January of 2021.
That's, that's yes. And just to let you know, as the 50 or 60 meetings that I went to on the commission, I read through and went through all of the documentation for each one of those meetings, and those meetings would go from anywhere from 200 pages that should be And those meetings would go from anywhere from 200 pages that you'd be reading to maybe 13 to 1500 pages. And, and I did that so that I could understand what they were doing and, and have a better understanding of, of the different facets of what the commissioners have to do. That's all.
Great, thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question. If you need me to repeat it, I'm happy to do so.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Are you committed to reading all submitted land use materials and sorting through minutia in a quasi-judicial capacity? And if your response is yes, please name two land use skillsets that you would want to brush up on before taking office in January of 2021?
I guess to the first part of the question, whether I, I want to dig through the minutia of all of the county land use proposals, or all the proposals that come before the county, I would actually say I don't think that that is an appropriate role for the commission. The commission sets high-level policy and steers and guides and makes sure that the ship is running. But we have a very competent professional staff at the county who are land use and land use planning experts. And so to, and, and we also have a planning commission who also vets and reviews a lot of, a, a lot of issues for the county. So I don't know if it's necessary for a commissioner to commit to read every single piece of, you know, land use, land use planning paperwork that comes, that comes through. But I do, I do know that we have had some major flaps. And those are the places where I would expect a commissioner to really drill down and make sure that they understand what is going on in the middle of this conflict and how to solve that problem. And a couple of places I, 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 I'm aware of that have been significant sticky areas in the past have been permitting for marijuana production operations. And the, the other thing that is, it's sort of, it's to some degree, a, a self, a self-inflicted wound, but the, the county has been very intent on challenging the state on exclusive farm use zone land that is, it's not farmable and we need to figure that out. But the way that they've been doing it has been, it's been very protracted and conflict, conflict ridden.
Great, thank you, Phil. And Phil, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. And I suspect both of you will keep this civil, but the question is, what distinguishes you from your opponent?
I would say that the, the time that I've spent here in Deschutes County is, has helped me develop, to develop an intimate understanding of the county and the people of the county and a substantial network of relationships. So a lot of, there are a lot of people who know me in Deschutes County who I've worked with when I was Senator's office, when I was working at COIC. I, I, one of the things I, I pride myself on particularly is that I, I have worked with a lot of forestry contractors, I've worked with a lot of farmers. I, I, you know, I know the rural parts of this county well, as well as the urban parts of this, this county well, from, you know, being a city dweller. So I, I think I would be able to bridge the urban-rural divide here in Deschutes County in a significant way. And I also think that my collaborative approach to problem-solving just, you know, makes me, makes me unique. I am a, I'm not a very partisan person because I believe that, you know, anytime you get into some kind of public policy issue or conflict or debate, that anyone you talk to in that debate has some kind of legitimate concern or interest. They may not be presenting it as politely as they could be, but they, they have legitimate concerns and interests. And we need to figure out how to get all those people talking to each other and hashing stuff out. So collaborative approach, bridging the urban-rural divide, extensive history here in Deschutes County.
Great, thank you, Phil. And same question for you, Greg. What distinguishes you from your opponent?
About, about what? Anything? Okay.
Your views.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, with me is, is since I'm, I'm from rural Indiana, I, I, I know rural fairly well. And also with my experience with going down to the commissioner's office, I know all, a lot of people down there and also with me with the, and, and the Transportation Advisory Committee and also with the Transit Advisory Committee. I know a lot of people and, and I have, went to almost, I went to almost all the neighborhood associations. You got 13 neighborhood associations. I think I went to 13 of them, about, about 10 of them at, at probably four or five times before this happened. The current owners, my words, I couldn't go to the meetings anymore, so. And I think with me, I, I'm a team player. I want to make sure everybody's running in the same, same direction. And I try to bring everybody, and I want to bring everybody's views to, to fruition too. That's all.
Great, thank you, Greg. And Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond first to this next question. And this will take us back into the realm of finance. What would you do to be a good steward of Deschutes County taxpayer dollars?
Oh, how would I be?
Yeah, I would, what would you do to be a good steward of Deschutes County taxpayer dollars?
Okay, well, from, from what I usually looked at is it was zero-based budgeting. Zero-based budgeting means you start from the ground up and see exactly what you need and, and what you start with and what you need, and you work from there. And, and that's what I'm used to in working with teams. And I know that you've got over a thousand people that you're, you're, you're heading up with on, on your administrative standpoint. So it's ver- very, very important. You got 20, I think it's 22 different entities that you're working with. And it's a difficult, but rewarding situation. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question. What will you do to be a good steward of Deschutes County taxpayer dollars?
Yeah, like, like I said before, I, I think this is a great question because if you want to know what an elected leader or a candidate really cares about, you look at what their budget looks like. I believe that this county commission has been trying to do things in the name of fiscal responsibility that are actually fiscally short-sighted. We are missing out on opportunities to invest, invest in growing services for a growing community. Important things that maintain our safety and our quality of life because we don't want to spend a penny now. We're being a penny, we're being penny-wise and pound foolish. And I, I, I'll give a couple of examples. The, back in spring 2019, you know, about a year ago, the, the county commission decided to reduce funding for, reduce its general fund investment in the Health Services Department, even though the Health Services Department said a few things. First, they said, you know, we, with the, if, if you give us level funding, then we can, we can take on these things that, that have been like our chronic issues. We can take on youth suicide, which has been spiking dramatically in our county over the last decade. Now we're, now we're one of the counties in Oregon with the highest rates of youth suicide. We can get this crisis stabilization center going, which will allow our law enforcement officers to take someone who is having a mental health crisis or is jacked up on opioids or some other substance somewhere besides the emergency room or to jail. Because those people don't belong in the emergency room or jail. Need a place to come down or calm down. They, and the, the killer, the thing that, that the Health Services Department said that, that is most painful to read right now is they said, hey, you know, we don't think we have quite enough capacity to deal with communicable disease outbreak. Something like Ebola or Zika, they didn't even know what COVID-19 was back in spring 2019. But they foresaw that they had insufficient capacity to deal with that issue. So health services is one area where we have been fiscally short-sighted. We, we're unwilling to spend money, where we could have prevented larger costs. Food composting at the landfill was something we also saw a huge amount of resistance to, even though it'd save us my in-laws time.
Great, thank you, Phil. And Phil, you'll have the opportunity to respond to this next question. If a documented tax oversight and potential fraud was brought to your attention, would you work in the public interest to bring the situation to light for public discussion and community input?
I think I know where this question comes from. There are, I, I've heard from a couple of people about concerns about certain property owners within the county who are sort of double-dipping on incentives that they're getting. So they are, these are people who are like rural property owners who are both, they get a residential mortgage to purchase their, their property. And then they also get the tax deferment, the Oregon State Tax Deferment for agricultural land. So they, they, they say, hey, exclusive farm use zone land. Now, the problem with that is that the, the tax deferment is supposed to help people who are, are, are farmers to make it because the, the state prioritizes and values agriculture. So they want to give a little subsidy to help keep, you know, agriculture in business and, and make farmers more viable. The, the residential, the really cheap residential mortgage rates are intended to incentivize homeownership. So, but the residential mortgage, the residential mortgages say, they specifically say, you can't farm if you're taking this residential mortgage. So these people are doubled, if, if it's true that this is happening, then these people are double-dipping. They're getting the cheap farm tax rate, but they're not growing anything and they're getting the residential mortgage. And the net result is that it, it's not fair to farmers, to real farmers because, you know, they, they can't get the, the cheap mortgage rate, residential mortgage rates for, to run their farm. And it's not fair to the taxpayers of Deschutes County because it, it would be depriving us of significantly more revenue, potentially millions of dollars more per year.
Great, thank you, Phil. And Greg, I'll repeat the question for you. If a documented tax oversight and potential fraud was brought to your attention, would you work in the public interest to bring the situation to light for public discussion and community input?
Yes, I think I would. Those, those are things that I think if it's a fraud, I think we need to bring that to, to public attention and for public input to see if there's any criminal activity that's happening there. But those are unforgivable things as far as I'm concerned. Because like Phil was saying, and you, you, you get a benefit for certain things and all of a sudden you're trying to take, take advantage of another situation. So I, I would definitely go public on that one. That's it.
Great, thank you. And Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond to this next question. Many counties have voted to change the county commissioner position to nonpartisan instead of affiliated with a political party. Would you support or oppose this for Deschutes County and why or why not?
Actually, that one, I, I would support being nonpartisan. And that's because there's, I believe there's 20, 20 counties that have the same type of government we have, and 16 of them have it as nonpartisan. And I think that the, the, the commissioner should have been a nonpartisan situation because right now we have three Republicans and we have a problem with the state government getting like the judge. I mean, and, and there's other things that we tried to get from the state and we can't get them. And, and I, I would foresee that some of that's because of the fact that we have Republicans in, in the commissioners' positions. And that, that's my thought on it.
Great, thank you, Greg. And Phil, same question.
I would support this position becoming nonpartisan. And I, I would encourage, actually, I would, it's a very simple thing for that to be changed. And I would encourage the current county commission to consider putting it on the ballot for November. It wouldn't help Greg's in my race, but it would, it would affect all future elections. And, and the reason I say that is because things like good schools and well-maintained roads are nonpartisan issues. They, you know, community wildfire protection, it should be a nonpartisan issue. It shouldn't matter what, whether you're D or an R, if, if you want us to have good schools, safe homes and, 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 you know, well-maintained roads and things like that. I would also say that I think a, a, a nonpartisan position would fit Deschutes County better. This is a very purple, moderate place. And we have a long history of, we have, we have, we have a, a long history of very, very moderate elected officials in this area being, you know, very successful and representing people. People like Ben Westlin, who was our, you know, he was a state legislator and then, you know, graduated to be treasurer. And, you know, in the, in the process, he went from R to independent to Democrat. And, you know, he was a moderate, you know, like very moderate Democrat, very moderate Republican, you know, so what? Tammy Bany, who was able to get both the Democratic and Republican nomination in, in one of the, the prior elections, I think maybe five or six years ago. So we, we, this community is a very moderate, problem-solving, pragmatic place. And a, a nonpartisan county commission seats would match that.
Thank you, Phil. And Phil, you'll have the opportunity to respond to this question. And we just have a few more before we move on to closing statements. Please tell us which political action committees have given financial support to your campaign?
So far, I have not received any contributions from political action committees. Although I have, I have some commitments from a, a couple of labor organizations and from the Oregon League of Conservation Voters and from the Strengthening Central Oregon PAC to make contributions to, to my campaign.
Thank you, Phil. And Greg, same question. Any political action committees have given financial support to your campaign?
No, no, nobody has given me any support. And I, until the primaries over with, I, I am not asking for any. And that.
Thank you, Greg. Two more questions before we move on to closing statements. And Greg, you'll have the opportunity to respond to this question first. Can you name one issue, just one if you want, more if you have time, where you disagree with your political party?
Oh, disagree with political party?
Yes, little, little different angle.
Okay. Actually, from, from a standpoint, I can't think of anything at the present time. I, I think there was one, but I, I can't remember what it was yet, so no.
Okay, great. And Phil, same question. Can you name one issue where you disagree with your political party?
I, yeah, I, so to go back to the nonpartisan seat question, I've all just wanted to let everyone know that for the first 10 years that I lived here in central Oregon, I was a non-affiliated voter. And when I went to work for Senator Merkley and during the, during the election of 2016, I, you know, I wanted to register to, to vote in the Democratic primary. And I just, I stayed. But as, as a, as a, a person who works on rural sustainability issues and is now also a registered Democrat, I, I sometimes feel uncomfortable with the national Democratic Party. I think that our, our, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the Democrats who represent parts of Oregon are better. But nationally, I believe that the Democratic Party sometimes struggles to interact effectively with rural America. And, you know, that, we can see, you know, I, I've seen it, the, the way it plays out in, in forest management issues, for example. We, we've seen, you know, people at the national level who say like, you shouldn't touch forests because if you, if you, if you get in there and you mess around, you're just going to make things worse. make things worse. But our forests are really screwed up, and they actually need active restoration to be, to be restored and to become resilient and healthy again. That needs to be done the right way. It's not like go in the woods and do whatever you want. I mean, it needs to be carefully thought out, and it needs to be ecologically appropriate to the forest type. But our, our forests are highly altered in eastern Oregon, and we need to actively manage them. And I get, I get a lot of pushback when I interact with people at the national level, you know, when I, you know, sometimes when I would be, when I was at Senator Merkley's office, and I had to interact with people from other offices. So there's one place.
Great. Thank you, Phil. And final question before we move on to closing statements. And Phil, you'll have the opportunity to respond to this question first. What county departments pique your interest, and why?
Well, the, the, I know a lot about a lot of county departments, just through my work, my work career, having been exposed to them and worked with people in various places. But certainly in the last few months, two months, the Health Department, the Health Services Department has been of particular interest, because that is one of the places where we see the COVID-19 response being, being managed. We have, we have really good people at the, in the Public Health Department within Health Services, who are working on our, our committee's response, contract, contact tracing, things that, you know, you hear them talk about contact tracing all the time, and how that's a criteria to get, get this, you know, get us reopened. That's where it's happening. Contact tracing is happening in the, in the health, in the Public Health Department and the Communicable Disease Division. But there's all sorts of interest in mental health, and mental and behavioral health right now, and that's on the other side, the behavioral health side of the, the Health Services Department, and that's where we could deal with things like our spiking youth suicide rates, or you, we could see these neat synergies with law enforcement, where, you know, we're, we're doing a better job of taking people who are, you know, who don't need to go to jail, and instead, you know, giving them a place to come down or calm down at this crisis stabilization center. So that the Health Services Department has been, been of particular interest, learning that the current county commission reduced the general fund investment back year when it was a good year, by, by $330,000 was a disappointment. And so I would say that's, that's one of the places I've been most interested in the last few months.
Thank you, Phil. And Greg, same question. What county departments pique your interest, and why?
Okay, I, I've got a few of them. I've got the road department, and the code department, and also health. And the road department is, I'm better known on there because of my, my, my association with the, with transportation, and I, I'm interested in that, and want to make sure that we have as efficient traffic going through and in bend and in the Deschutes County as possible. Code enforcement, because that's where all, all the determinations of land use or, or building codes, and when I'm looking there is building codes, because I think there might be some building codes changes that we can have, because they'll make houses more wildfire resources. On health, I agree with Phil, because the stabilization center is going to be a great, great attribute to the county, and we don't need to be putting people into jail that don't need to, they can just be, be there. And then that also is a homeless thing too, because I think we need to help, help with the homeless. So that's all, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Thank you to Phil and Greg for responding to our questions. Now, we would like to move on to closing statements, and Greg, you'll have the opportunity to offer your closing statement first.
Okay. Thank you again for the City Club and for the League of Women Voters for having us, for this opportunity. I, I'm, I am for, Deschutes County, I'm very passionate about Deschutes County, and I think with my experience with accounting of the coronavirus 19, I can help get the county through their financial problems that we're going to see probably in the next few years. I also want the transportation to increase safety and reduce congestion. Work with ODOT to increase the efficiencies of our roads 97, 20, and 26, while proper preparedness. And affordable housing is the main thing. And with that, I am also for, as I said before, I'm for gun background, background checks, and for, and against assault weapon type sales. I'll fight against global warming. I'm advocate for, for the reduction of fossil fuels, against fracking, and renewable energy will be a boon to our economy. I care deeply about Deschutes County, and will help to steer it in the right direction. I hope that visitors will come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Phil, your closing statement, please.
Yes. Thank you again to the, to the League of Women Voters and City Club for giving us this opportunity to speak with voters today. With the right leadership, our county can deliver effective public and behavioral health services to keep us safe and thriving, thoughtful land use planning that improves housing affordability, reduces traffic congestion, and preserves habitat and open space, well maintained county roads that'll get us where we need to go, sustainable waste management, and law enforcement and community justice services that both protect us and redeem and rehabilitate people before they get too far off path. A county commissioner needs to do some key things. They need to help moderate important policy debates in our community, to help people find agreement, not fan the flames. Commissioners need to provide strategic direction for the county staff and departments so that they can deliver all those services, and then they need to get out of the way. And the county commissioners need to steward the county budget and be both fiscally strategic and fiscally responsible. I know how to bring people together to solve tough problems. I know how to run effective public agencies and programs, and build public private partnerships. And I know how to coordinate local efforts with both the federal and state government levels, which I think is going to be especially important as we try to recover from COVID-19, because all of the economic stimulus and recovery and, and that kind of stuff comes from the federal and state level. We have very little ability to make those things happen at the local level. So the, the, the federal, state, local coordination is going to be key. Please visit my, my website to learn more about me and my campaign. That's www.votphilchang.com. I hope to earn your vote for May 19, and be, thank you.
Thank you to Greg Bryant and Phil Chang for participating in today's forum, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for partnering with City Club of Central Oregon to get this information out during these challenging times. Remember, if you enjoyed today's forum and would like to cover the cost, please consider making a donation to City Club on their website at cityclubco.org. You can also make a donation to the League of Women Voters on their website at lwb, lwb as in Victor, deschutes.org. This and the four other forums that we conducted are available on City Club's Facebook pages and YouTube channels, and you can hear an audio replay of this forum on 889 KPOV, I D C Community Radio, Friday, May 1st at 12 noon. On behalf of Greg Bryant and Phil Chang, along with the League of Women Voters and the City Club of Central Oregon, and Matt Hand from Hand in Hand Productions, I'm Mike Fisher saying thank you for tuning in. Keep your interest in democracy alive, and please, be safe, be healthy. Good night.